You want to come to order?
Randy Williams and Maria Bass.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for this opportunity to come together as a group and work for our children here in Caldwell Parish. And Lord, bless all the children that started school today and all the teachers and all the administrators and all the bus drivers and all the people that are, and all the lunchroom workers and everybody that's involved in taking care of our children and educating our children in this parish. Lord, we just lift them up to you, we lift ourselves up, you give us guidance and understanding in all that we do. And help us, Lord, to appreciate all the blessings that you have given us in this parish and all the blessings you've given us this time. We lift ourselves up to you in Christ name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, we do a roll call. Randy Rins, Doug Barton, Melinda Ballard, here. Barry Glass, Maria Bass, here. Gary Castles, Johnny Fallon, here.
All right, item A is executive committee report.
Let's run the checks. Everything seems to be getting harder. Sales taxes have been down a little bit this month, past month compared to fiscal year 2022, 2023, it's down just a small, about $8,000. So everything looks good. For the year, we're still running around 4% or a little bit better than 4% over the last fiscal year.
All right, any questions? Thank you, Randy. All right, item B is recognized Donald Martinez as favorite son's employee of the month. I can attest that he loves to give the, I'm about to take my life. Go on, Doc.
Donald, it's definitely a privilege to award you with this, sponsored by Taylor &amp; Sons and the insurance and financial services. You've been my right-hand man, without a doubt, last year, really and truly teaching me a lot of things about the job. And any time that I've ever needed something, Donald's quick on the spot. I can give him an assignment to go do, but he's quick to go take care of it, or he'll give me a call back if we need to do something else with it. He's been, from what Donald told me, he's been employed with the school system for 10 years. Started out as a bus driver, ran several different routes, then moved over into the maintenance department where he is right now. So really and truly, I do not know how I could function in my position without having Donald helping me out a lot. So Donald, on behalf of Taylor &amp; Sons and Caldwell Parish School Board, thank you very much, and you're the employee.
Appreciate it, y'all.
Thank you, Donald. Well, yesterday he was driving a sub bus route, and we got a little confusion about that, and I got on, and he just said, "Here, give me a hug."
I was looking at your party.
He said, "I'll be okay."
All right, item C is review and vote on approval of the following minutes due I-13th, 2023.
I make a motion, we fail. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Item D is review and vote on scrapping of three buses and advertising for sale of five buses. That's like a dame, so it'd be a big sale. You up?
You're up.
Love selling, that's great.
It's a very profitable thing.
Okay, yeah, we've gone through and looked at some of our buses that we really cannot use anymore, that we've parted them out as far as we can go. And then some of them are just not, they're not roadworthy anymore. So we're just asking for permission to be able to put these up for bid so that we can just dispose of that property to get it, you know, just off of our, off of our property, basically, because some of them are becoming a little bit of an eyesore.
The ones that aren't roadworthy, they're not over there, right?
No.
So do you sell them to like a scrap place or something, or?
They bid, they bid, bid out. Y'all approved some of them.
So James, when is the opening, closing bid date? Tomorrow?
We typically do it. We're going to approve it first before we.
What, typically do it, what, two, two weeks of a month? What have we done in the past?
Oh, I don't, I don't know this. My first, first go around yet, no. I would say two, I would say two weeks.
I think you should know, what, so what are we going to do, two weeks or a third day?
Two weeks.
Okay, so from tomorrow, two weeks? Well, from the time of his paper, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So they need to contact Caldwell Parish School Board?
Yeah, yes.
You, you David?
Uh, you're in. They need a woman.
You're trans, they're supervisor.
There you go.
Okay.
We'll run it for a minute.
Do we have a, do we have a motion, we?
I make a motion, we scrapped three buses and advertised for sale. A second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Thank you, James.
All right, item E is review and vote on pay scale for Head Start teachers.
Do you want to do it?
No.
Okay, so what you have in front of you is basically the regular teacher contract, and the second page that has the highlighting is what was changed, and then the third page is much bigger than we even see it. So what we did is, right now, we have been able to employ teachers down there with less than a bachelor's degree. So in the past few years, we've not even been able to hire people with associate degrees, and that's what Head Start requires, is an associate degree. So the past couple years, we've got waivers where we could hire someone with just a CDA, which is basically a high school diploma with some classes. And we, what we had agreed upon when we first got the Head Start grant is to let, and said, "Okay, we're going to hire these teachers that are less than a BA. Let's just split the pay scale and we'll set them here," and I think it's around 29, I think is that right, 29,000 what they're starting at. So you've got, you know, it's just a big variance, and it's like it doesn't give them anything to work toward. And so in talking with some other systems, what they've done is start them out, you know, you get a bump, because what, basically, if you went from being a parent to being that 29,000 teacher, you're doubling your pay. So some of them, you double your pay, and it's like, well, what, what else do I need to do? So we've talked to some other systems and looking at what they have done, it's like a slow bump. If you start with a CDA, you're going to go from a parent pay, which is six, 16 at the highest probably, to 22.5. Then once you get your associate degree, you evolve to 25.5. Then when you got your bachelor's, you can take a bigger jump to around 33, 34, whatever the starting pay is at that time on the pay scale. And two, it's got to be that they understand that they have to achieve these things within certain timeframes, and that's what Head Start requires. And right now, we've got nothing to hold onto it. And so this would just be an incentive for them to, to move, and we, you know, I put the memorandum acts and referred to the Head Start program standards where that's in the standards that they have to do that. But other than that, it's the same basic teacher contract.
Question. Is this an increase anywhere, and if so, is it coming out of general fund or is it coming out of your?
It's not an increase, it would actually be a decrease, and it's all out of Head Start funds.
So this has nothing to do with what we already give them?
No, zero.
What happened is there's five teachers there, three, one went home because she was pregnant with seven babies. One transferred to kindergarten position because she did finish her bachelor's. And then one wanted to go back down to be a parent. She said the stress of trying to take classes and being a teacher was too much, she wanted to be a parent. So with us hiring three new people this year, none of whom have the qualifications, we thought it'd be a good time to put it in place, because we wouldn't go back on anyone who's already there. It would certainly be with new people coming through. So with three coming in, we just felt like it was a good time to put it in place. And then two of them are very close to having associates, so next year they would take that first jump. And that, you know, when you get an increase like that, it just gives you that incentive to keep going and build higher. But no, this doesn't affect the general plan at all.
Do you need a motion to?
I'm going to have to have a motion if you do that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
No.
I'm going to have so. All right, item L is financial.
I'll hand my models here to do that, because I was dreading that. Okay, financial update, you got first page, things like that. It's very brief on this, we had expected actual variance of $900,000. At this point, all bills have been paid, all revenues have been booked, we're at 668. So that's compared with $900,000. We have beginning balance, beginning fund balance of $7,170,000, this is all general fund. We have an ending fund balance of $6,500,000 right now. Now, the reason we have that big of a variance between 668 and 900,000, we collected about $140,000 extra loan indirect cost that I didn't know how to budget that at the time. I just kind of swirled it, because you're not sure whether you're going to get a full rate or not, and it's coming back to me from hell. And then we also have $128,000 that we did not incur in '23 because the work was done in '24. That's on the internet. We call it like.
New network equipment and Wi-Fi equipment for two schools.
So that'll go into the new year, unfortunately, rather than in '23, and this was various there, but none of the work was done, so it's a 24 for this year. Sales tax fund, we didn't have a budget revision. I said we're roughly breakeven, we're going to be within 5%, so we didn't do a budget revision on that. We had a beginning balance of $318,000, we had a deficit of $95,000, we have fund balance, we're all over $222,000. Lunch fund, we had a budget on projected deficit of $80,000, it came in minus $40,000, so that's payable. Federal reimbursements came in stronger than expected, that was $66,000 in quarters. Maintenance fund, we had $160,000 in total budget deficit, we came down to $57,000, so that's, that's really good. Where I was looking, preparing the amended last time, I looked at June 22, kind of based how we were on maybe coming through June 23, it was pretty heavy. I just went and bated the four, four amount that we had from last year, and it was too heavy apparently, which is good. So we'll have an ending fund balance around $80,000 from that. I turn the page, there's the details y'all usually see on each of those school funds, and I have some annotations with that. Midway down in the year-to-year column, I have 83%, that is how much we pay out in salaries and benefits collectively out of $15,764,000 in dispensed for the year. Everything else accounts for $2.6 million, 562 of that was insurance, property insurance, I've had nothing to do with that. I think that's all I got on that page. Return page, that's the balance sheet on general fund home, so that gives you a little recap of how much we have for various things. I like looking at the summaries page, we'll get to that, that one in a minute. Sales tax, we've kind of already covered that one, we've skipped. Lunch. We've already covered that, there was a $66,000 increase on federal reimbursements that I didn't expect. And maintenance, we've covered that. Next page, y'all have kind of seen this before in different format, but yellow column at the top, that's fiscal year '22 actual. And all this is showing is the revenues and expenditures and the net change and fund balance on each of those columns. The blue column is the original budget, that was, that had the negative $300,000. We amended that by January 54, the bus purchase, like, 550, that's not showing on here. White on black column, that's fiscal year '23 amended, that's what we amended to. And then the web is where we are currently on the actual. So that's just a brief recap and want to compare the different years, different columns. That's one thing you can do, if you have a question on any of the funds individually, obviously give me a call. The ones that are in yellow are the ones that we've already covered. So everything else, fair game, obviously, well, those are also pretty good. And then we've got all the funds on the next page, and that's, you know, we have $28 million in revenues, 28 billion, 29 million in expenditures. And then if you look at next page, that is the balance sheet. And on the far right, you've got $7.9 million in cash, that is the June 30th. We have receivables of $3.8 million, and that's more than we've been collecting at this point. We had two, three federal grants we just filed last two, three days, so that's not important, it will become something. Further down, you have accounts payable and federal payable, that's, that's all I've been paid out. And then the grand recap, you got $8.8 million in equity, that's general fund, that's all of all the other funds. So don't get confused, that's general fund, that's everything. Next page, student counts by year. Bo had asked me a few questions previously on student accounts, so I pulled this together with Haley's break up, because she knows all the software stuff. You have fiscal year '23 at the top, goes down fiscal year '12 at the bottom. I used fiscal year '17 as a base, if you read across, but I green columned NFP, we were 1,590 students, and I just kind of pulled one out of the air on what year we pulled. Some years are higher, some years are lower, and you see the change of '22 years, uh, '22 various years. The next or last column shows the change in NFP revenue from that base year of '17, so we're down $1.2 billion as compared to that year, fiscal year '17. As compared to prior year, we're down $272,000. So anyway, that just kind of gives you a little bit of a recap as to how, how big NFP affects every college. Next page, we, I beat this one to death, but I just, one last time on how much insurance, property insurance is. We're paying additional $490,000 over the last 40 years, so that's, that's another big jump. And then the last section is talking about NFP distribution. And this is what we get from the state, and it's, this is all the calculations that go into it. And I eliminated a lot of bear issues, but I left the ones that are close to us, just for comparison. I mean, some of them totally unrealistic compared to what we watched talk. Maybe they're $112 million worth, we're not quite that high, we're eleven. But anyway, on page one, they start off with that base calculation, and then they deduct a lot of those for various allocations to other schools. Go to the next page, you see that Concordia has $2.1 million invested from the Health Charter. Charter schools are really a drain on public school system. Thankfully, we don't have any charter school, we have to split money with. And then if you go to page four, I have $88,000 circled, I don't know exactly what that's for, but anyway, that's an deduction. The $7,966, that is how much we get per student. So we've always said around $8,000, it's, there's the exact number there. On the next page, $14,000, that was a NFP adjustment, I don't know what that's for exactly. And then we get into the mid-year adjustments for students. The October 22 count, as compared to the February 22 count, we had $199,000 decrease. But then if you go to February 23, we had $71,000, so that's, that's great, hopefully that translates into income. And then further over, $38,000 supplemental compensation, that's for exactly. And then we get into the pay raises. You can have a increase in NFP with a decrease in students, because you have pay raises that come into port. It, it looks kind of weird when you look at NFP and you think you have an increase, even though it really is a decrease, because all the pay raises are spent. So anyway, 20, you have $240,000 increase for raises, and then you got $204,382 for the other shift. And then if we look at page 77, you see it's split out. You've got $78,000 that is Fund 112, we're developing Fund, Chris wants that. You have the $47,198, that's hot house services, that's the grant that Rebecca got for us this year. And that's going to be, how much does that come in here, Rebecca?
I'm sorry?
High cost services allocation.
It was 20 this year?
It was 47 this year.
47, there's another 20 coming, and next year, it looks like it's going to be more like 160, so.
So, so great job there. And being grand total, we're getting $12,429,000 for NFP. So, Bo, I don't know if that answers some of your questions, but I mean, looking at this is quite confusing sometimes. Thankfully, a lot of ours had zeros on those columns, so that, that's a good thing. As far as fiscal year '24 budget, I have not played with that too much. As far as fiscal year twenty-four budget, I have not played with that too much. I mean, we're still kind of where we were. I really don't think we're going to boot too much from that number. James did pull in a little bit of a benefit that we're looking at on the two new buses that we'll get next year, because we already bought the twenty-four buses. The twenty-five buses, we're looking at reducing the costs by buying forty-year-old used buses. And that will drop the price, eight thousand per bus, I think?
We could probably get it for about eighty-five thousand compared to the brand new one, a hundred and twenty-six.
Okay, so saving about forty-six thousand, forty-six thousand per bus, around ninety thousand for two buses, which is what we're trying to do for you.
Dave, did somebody say last month or a month before that there was a resolution of some kind stating that we approved about two buses per year? Because if so, I'd like to see it, because I, that ain't something I think I would have voted on, but I would like to see it just in case.
That was, I don't know how far back it was done, but it was done. And we can obviously revisit that, I mean, depending on how the fleet is.
You remember what it was? You remember what it was?
It would have been either July or August of twenty-two. Okay, is that far back? Okay. That's where we bought the new buses.
That's when we got the first two.
Yep, and then the board voted to expand these cars.
So it's just a random, I guess, resolution that says, whether we need them or not, every two years you can purchase. Because that just don't sound.
No, timeout. Wasn't random, because James was talking about we are in dire need of replacing buses. So that's what drove.
And we had moved to leasing buses instead, we had a transportation meeting about this. And so the guy came and presented the benefits of leasing and then the benefits of purchasing. And at that time, it was a recommendation of the Transportation Committee to bring to the board that they, we get on a rotation of replacing buses two a year. Because we had not replaced them since.
Probably about, there was a period at some point in time, about eight years, where no buses were purchased at all. So your fleet started to decline and have mechanical problems. And then the leased buses started to come into the play. But you either increase your leased buses, the more of them, or you go back to at least trying to buy a couple of buses a year to replace the other buses that are parting to age out.
But James, during those eight years that you're speaking of, when Jeff was there, I don't recall having, you know, too many issues out of buses. And if so, I think at that point, he was saving money. If you can, Kayla, I'd just like to see it just to revisit, because I, it's not something wrestling that I think I would have voted on, because I just don't see why, you know, a random, you know, resolution would be there of just every two years, just go purchase buses, even if you don't need it. But if it's there, it's fine, I'd just like to see, because I'd like to know I voted on. I just, I don't think I did vote for it, because I think Judith there was on the, at the time, yeah.
And you said every two years, is that what you?
Is it every year?
Two every year.
These three-year-old buses you're talking about, David, that's next year, not this year.
That's correct.
These three-year-old buses you're talking about, David, what, where are we getting this from?
They would be purchased from Ross Bus out of Alexandria. They would be buses that were leased to a school system at one time, and that school system turned those buses in and leased out another three. So then they would either, we could either lease buses or we could purchase buses, whichever y'all choose to do.
There are kind of warranties that come to these buses, aren't there?
Some warranties, yes, on various mechanical things.
One of the advantages, I think, James, correct, for buying a leased bus, is the fact that if it's leased, you guarantee that it's been maintained properly. Is that correct? Is that one of the reasons you looked at that? How many buses do we have?
Twenty-five total on the road. And then we have eight that we can use for sub, but currently, four of those are dealing with chemical issues.
I know there's no way to get an exact figure, but how long does a bus generally last in a system? Ten, twelve?
No, mostly twenty.
They'll last twenty years?
Yes. There used to be a state law that you had to get rid of them after, or no longer use them after twenty years, but I think that has been negated.
Remember, we used to buy twelve football helmets every year, so we'd always have sixty that were good. It's the same principle.
And keep them rotated and recertified every two years.
Those buses we're getting rid of are two thousand threes, two thousand fours, two thousand sixties.
Twenty.
Those, we're looking at twenty-year-old buses.
And they're not blowing down the road.
No, they're.
They've been used up.
Yeah, ninety-two. Of course, it's probably been scrapped for a while, I don't know.
What's the oldest bus on the road now?
I would have to look at my numbers to see, but it's probably going to be probably about two thousand ten, two thousand twelve.
But at this rate, in ten years, we got twenty buses, that's ten years on the list.
When we started leasing buses, I mean, that's been a while now. When we started, what was the benefits in leasing at the time, compared to the benefits of my leasing?
I don't know about back then, but I mean, when I ran the numbers, my whole account was a whole lot better off buying.
Really?
And then whenever the guy came up here from Ross, he said buying was your best option. So, I mean, it just validated what I thought was correct, so.
He was at the board meeting too, right?
Before all that is done, James, is there a way that you can communicate that to, I guess, make the finance committee or some other committee before all this gets brought back to us as far as purchasing?
Yes, you're talking about for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
That's next year, right?
Yeah, but we would need to start the process in January to go on and start it up. We wouldn't purchase them at that time, we would not purchase them until probably June or July. But we would need to go on and get the order in saying, okay, we want to get two either new buses or two leased, three-year-old leased buses.
We talked about it in January, over the January lease.
Right.
Make another reminder.
All right, any more questions?
And I'll have the budget for the September four thing there.
Hey, David, if you can, get, yeah, get that to us as soon as possible, because if there's any questions, you know, litigate that before then, because I think there's still some concerns based on May, June, July, up until now. And if we can iron it out before we get here, I mean, because at some point, the public has a right to know what we're having, what we're doing, and how we're going to get to where we need to be. So, no rush, but, because I know you've got a lot.
Well, no, it has to be really by September first, because I'm advertising to get the public to come in here and look at it as of September first for those two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want you to rush.
He has a deadline.
Well, don't rush, but hit it to us, we're going to leave on a time, because we've got to approve it. Sure want to look it over a little bit.
I understand.
We need to explain too, also, how, when the insurance came in, how increased our property value went up, but insurance went up too long with that. We need to explain that too. Because y'all worked so hard to cut back on stuff, and then the insurance just wiped that out.
We tried to cut it too.
And it didn't work.
Yeah, the schools were looking further apart than four miles. I mean, you just can't stress a four-minute to, um, four miles, I mean, that's how it works, so.
Whatever they want to do.
All right, any more questions? All right, thank you, David. All right, Adam Zee, is district leaders update?
Sandra, you'll start?
Yes, we've had a good first two days back, so I am one short of a full crew, but we're subbing that position out until we find money that we want to put in there full-time. So it is advertised, and we, you know, have some applications, but require that they sub before we're there full-time. So hopefully, we'll have full crew. And that's all.
The breakfast thing's going over here at the high school?
Um, we will start it Tuesday. They wanted to kind of, we did a soft start for the two days, and so we're trying to kind of get.
Ease into it.
Yeah, and so they will start that Tuesday. Hopefully, it will, I think it will be good, I think.
Mr. West?
As Sandra said, we had a good two days of staff development days, and had a good speaker, evaluations were good. And of course, you've got a hydration slang, and so everybody put your bottle of water, and when you walk in, or whatever. Hope you enjoy that, compliments of the program. And everything went well, all the district administrators kind of guided the process, and got it all going and monitored, and we have everything in line. And I appreciate everybody's help, because it takes teamwork to get that all done, and we had this nice T-shirt, we were all matching in our T-shirts.
Pictures are nice.
As soon as they had their T-shirts in the district, we had the T-shirt.
Even we had a T-shirt, yeah.
A few, a real few.
Hey, Nick, all that's good, but I was there, and I'm a guilty part of it. I saw about ninety percent of everybody using their cell phone while this stuff is going on, including me. So at some point, we may have to just, even in these meetings, you know, just kind of restrict, you know, cell, because I'm guilty of it. And I'll use my cell, because I can't get mad. But I think when you have people in services and things like that, I mean, I'm talking, because I took photos, and I shared them with a few people just to validate. I think it's a disservice, because I don't know what you guys are spending on this stuff to, for in-service. But, you know, when you got everybody's head down for ninety-five minutes, or forty minutes, or fifty minutes of a sixty-minute timeframe, including me, that's not good. So I don't know if it's productive, I don't know if we need to look at it. Again, I would consider myself even in here, because like I said, I tried to condense myself down from using it.
Which incident did you have to?
When John Geis was there.
So, in defense, and I don't know that they were doing it, but I had put up a few articles.
I know where you're going.
You know, it wasn't, okay.
It was deliberate use of a cell phone. And again, I was guilt as well, so I'm including myself. And I'm saying, I'm willing to take that privilege away from myself, because it wasn't fair to John. You know, for me or anybody else to be on the phone, I mean, we do it in it, you know, this meeting. I don't know if we need to look at it, it's just pointing out that, you know. I understand that, again, you don't take pictures for sixty minutes, okay? You can shoot people free what they're looking at, if I need to, and I can call names if I need to, or not to, because I don't want no excuses. I'm saying, me, Baron, I'm guilty of it. There are other people that's guilty of it, to show respect, because we expect those kids to do the right thing with their phone. We should have that same expectation out of adults, and that's the point I'm getting at. I mean, we're starting off, you know, this school year with all this new stuff, policy and all. If we're going to be fair about it, let's everybody start off on the right track, without the expectation of kids and not, you know, the adults. And again, I'm including me using my cell phone when I shouldn't be.
I think it's happening everywhere.
Yes, yes, yes.
James, what's that?
Well, I agree, our first two soft start days were great. The kids were so happy to be back in school, and they were so excited to be, I saw a lot of happy faces. And I have to give a shout out to the pre-K, the faculty, and Monica for allowing them to come and help our K-one center transition, the babies transitioning kindergarten. It made a tremendous difference in the soft start makes for the little people. They had a friendly face, somebody that they knew, and somebody that knew them. So easing them into it was the best thing that could happen, we're going to do that from now on, I would like. That was great. Transportation, we've been working out kinks together as it goes, and overall, we've had, we've been very pleased. The teachers are very pleased, and we have a new reading curriculum for K-three, and the teachers are very excited about that, they've been begging for a change, so they're super pumped, ready to get going with instruction, ready for everything to settle down, so they can get to the nitty-gritty of it. Your building leaders are amazing, and the teachers are amazing. Everybody's been very positive and happy about everything, so I can ask for any better.
Mr. West?
Maintenance-wise, our main thing has just been making sure all the air conditioners are going, so we can keep everybody as cool as possible. Transportation, the two mornings went very, very well, the drivers were real pleased in everything. We did have a hiccup yesterday afternoon, we did, everything worked out with some of the drivers' help on getting those lined out, and we were able to get all the buses back in line at the high school, get everybody loaded up, and from the high school to junior high, and the buses were rolling back out at four fifteen.
What was the hiccup, was that what you meant by?
We had some issues at Union Central with making sure the routes were correct, and the buses kind of got bottlenecked right there with some, I think, some of the drop-off, I mean, hiccup traffic. But we all worked together and ironed those problems out, minding with my drivers, making sure that they were running the correct routes, and today was.
And with the hiccup, it just put us behind about twenty minutes. And so we were aiming for leave high school at four fifteen, and they left at four thirty-five. So it was about a twenty-minute hiccup, just trying to get a group of kids who used to be on a bus, on another bus, so.
James, I think it was a little bit more than a hiccup, but in favor of you and the superintendent, thank you guys for communicating, dissolving the issue, getting right on it. Superintendent and I talked this morning about it. I think the toughest day is going to be tomorrow, because that's what they've been looking forward to. Nick and I talked about it. I think whether we was for it or against it is no dominant issue. We need everybody to bind to it, we need everybody to do their very best, because if we don't do what we're supposed to do, then we're shortchanging those kids. And she's been out there, we've talked, but I want to applaud you for what you did yesterday. And I think it speeds volume, and instead of going up the list. And I'm just giving credit where credit is due. I think you did a hell of a job in executing yesterday, because I know there's a lot of pressure on you, and, you know, I think we can do it.
Well, it's pretty neat in the morning, when I'm coming in, I'm seeing four buses heading this way, I'm seeing four buses heading this way, I'm seeing another four buses, so they're rotating really truly like we had planned. And it's very, very neat to see that in action. And then in the afternoon, like today, they were all rolling back in at about two to four at a time, and getting in their lines and ready to go. I mean, we had them lined back up, I think everybody was lined back up, at probably about four oh, between four oh five and four ten, when the high school and the junior high gets ready to dismiss. We got them all loaded up, and like I said, we were rolling all the buses back out at four fifteen.
So I can see for myself in the morning, I'm going to be in a vehicle that nobody knows.
You're going to be a prostitute.
I'm just anxious to see how it's going to go, because it's complicated, but it's still, it's executed. And when I wrote about Union Central this morning, I mean, it was kind of neat, and I was kind of surprised to see the police officers on the side directing traffic, which was a good thing, because it's a lot of speed that comes through eight forty-nine at six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. So I think that's a good thing, I think we may need to applaud the sheriff department, because there was some difficulty with them. You know, I think when we get it going, we can all celebrate, because it took people unwilling to be willing to get this going. I mean, there's no if, ands, or buts about it, and for those teachers who may still be unwilling, whatever we can do to get them to buy, you know, into this by accepting what they're saying, sit down and talk with them, or whatever the case may be, I think at some point, we'll be somewhat where we need to be.
I feel good, I feel good about, I mean, the kids, the parents, the teachers, I mean, the administrators, the directors, and so. I mean, everybody is just pulling together, the sheriff's office, even yesterday, after we, you know, we're behind a little bit, Jack McKibben called me, and he said, what can we do different to support, what can we do, and then everybody's just working together.
And Miss Canyon and a Grayson.
Pardon?
Grayson, police department, and Gray too.
Because I immediately texted.
Johnny called me this morning, said it's going to be a good day, you know.
And I think about twenty minutes later, she called me back, and what we thought was, wasn't, thanks to you. So again, I think, James, you did a hell of a job, so pat yourself on the back.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and if we ever get straight, I'll be the first one to say you need a raise.
At least I'm moving up through the chain.
You, you where you need to be. I, I got confidence.
I know you're gonna retire before that happens.
Thank you. Ms. Mary?
Well, um, I want to start with saying, one of the big areas of concern in all the surveys that we did with parents was transitions. What was it gonna be like for all these kids that transitioned? And I want to make sure that I say that at every school, there were teachers and admin, therapists who, whatever the child needed, whether it was coming on campus four days in the mornings to meet everybody, whether it was an IEP meeting, whether it was phone calls, they made it happen and it made the start of school so much better. There were, you know, quite a few kids who we were on pins and needles just thinking about, you know, is this gonna work? Is it gonna be enough? And in the past two days, they've just walked in buildings seamlessly, gone to their home room classes. It's been amazing. And like I said, it, it's the people in those buildings that, um, that made that happen and it's, it was in response to the parent concerns. And I didn't schedule any of it. I said, you know, guys do it and they, these, um, ladies. I do have one gentleman's bed teacher now, so I can't say ladies anymore, but, um, they just took it and ran, um, ran with it and did what the kids needed because they've all got such big hearts for them. And, and admin allowed them to have access to the buildings, got classrooms ready and it made, it has made such a huge difference the past two days. I was thinking about it. I've been at Grayson the past two mornings and I think I've seen less kindergarteners crying. Than ever before. Typically that, you know, that's just what they do on the first day of school and I, it really hasn't been that way at all. So, actually, I think, I think it's, it's only been all of employee kids. Because they're seeing their mommas in the building and that sort of thing.
I literally thought something was wrong at Grayson when I walked the halls and there was no crying.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, it, it's, it's been amazing. I also want to give you guys an update on people appraisal and what they did this summer. Um, I know David gave you guys all those MFP counts and October one is a big one for us with how many kids are receiving special education services. And I can already tell you right now, if we did nothing between now and October one, our count would be higher than it was last year because these folks on this hallway churned out twenty-four evaluations this year.
That's huge.
That's huge. And part of it was because, um, Monica, uh, was, you know, allowed us to go get back to, I think, what we used to do when we worked with the early childhood team. So, ten of those are early childhood, um, kiddos and a lot of times that takes longer to get out. But, so there were eight others and then six reevaluations and then we've got six more evaluations that definitely will be kids that qualify before October one. Um, and, you know, a few more just that we're about to pick up too. But for them to get that much work done this summer is amazing. Like, they have not picked their heads up and it, it's a great team and I'm super excited about getting all these kids the services that they need.
Thank you. Ms. Wells?
Mine's a little bit different because I've been in a room, so I don't know what's going on. I've been in a room placement testing, so we, between Maria and I, we've placement tested eight kids that are coming back from homeschool. Um, and so, we're, we're getting kids back, high schools enroll some kids that are coming back, so we are getting those kids back that have been gone. Um, as far as, he mentioned MFP a while ago and he said SCA, I'm not sure what that is. I don't know if you've ever heard that before, but it's called a supplemental course allocation. We get money based on the number of kids we have, seventh through twelfth grade. That goes to pay for all of our high school students dual enrollment classes. They don't have to shell out a penny for dual enrollment. We pay for it all and that money comes from the state. So, that is huge when we have kids graduating with anywhere from twenty to forty hours of college credit before they graduate from high school. So, that's what that is when you see that, that SCA.
And they can start that as a team, right?
Um, they, typically, we just do juniors and seniors just because of the, we have some teachers that are certified through the university to teach the classes and then we have some that are online. Um, so, most of it's juniors and seniors.
Chris, how, how long you been working for us?
This is my thirtieth year.
So, you're a little old.
Well, the, the reason why I ask that is because this is the first year that I've seen you so relaxed.
Well, when you're a counselor, the beginning of school is a little crazy.
So confident in, in what you're doing and that goes to you and James and it shows that, you know, we all can elevate because, you know, you've always been, you know, not stand office, but just devoted to what you're doing. And, uh, I could be dying tomorrow. I don't know. I'm just giving you your flowers. While you, you know, because I think you're doing a good job. Uh, I often communicate with Angela and, uh, she always says, Christie, 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 Christie. So, evident that what you're doing is something that you like and, uh, wish you the best, you know, from here on out, you and James, because again, we all can grow. And, uh, I think she can attest, uh, you know, to that and I just want to tell you from me, not the board, I think you're doing a good job.
Thank you. And we had a really good, uh, a really good CTE advisory committee meeting this summer, um, in July, a lot of, we had community members and we actually, you know, talked about the CTE program and what we do.
That was a planned vacation. I didn't know anything about it.
But we did have a good meeting. And I talked to Monty. We're supposed to, um, he's gonna set up for me to go to the industrial board and he can tell me what we're doing too. So, probably sometime this fall.
Ms. Goode?
Um, we, you know, got off to a great start. Like I said, uh, all the pre-K teachers have been at Grayson with those, uh, kindergartners that came up. And it made them feel better too, to be able to sit there and see that the kids that came out and, and they're worried. You saw some of them that came off the bus, a little shaky and then they lost eyes with that, you know, that special car. And they had a list of who to be on with that far, so, um, it did go really, really well. And it allowed our teachers at Kelly to do some extra trainings that they are required to do by Head Start standards, so it's really worked out well. And two, the buses can get all the kinks worked out before we throw a hundred and twenty four-year-olds out. Right now at Kelly, we've got sixty-eight three-year-olds enrolled and we haven't started a year with that many kids since before COVID. So, we're really excited and we can only take seventeen more out here. And we've got four, um, turning three in October, November, so those will jump right in, um, so we're really excited about that.
I see your, um, open house was really good too. I, I live out that way.
Yeah, yeah, it was tonight. It was at Kelly and then tomorrow night at the pre-K, yeah. And they're excited. They, they've done a lot and, um, Ashley's, you know, Ashley's calling his parents and kids too, but she can, um, talk to a parent and get on, convinced to do something that no one else would. So, um, she does really good job of that. And right now, the pre-K a hundred. We haven't started at a hundred in a while and we've been pretty much eighty-five to ninety starting out in the group, so, um, at a hundred there. So, we're excited, looking forward to the year and, um, when David mentioned the MFP and the raises. So, none of those, none of that staff, um, is in that money, but it all comes out of the grants we have. And, um, Head Start did have a cost of living adjustment and that was what we told them it would go toward, was bumping that raises and it coming out of the grant. So, um, it'll, it'll help offset that to the Head Start grant too.
Chris, do we know how many we got in the graduate class this year?
True, I'm not, it's, it's right around a hundred, but I'm not exactly sure because she's had some that were seniors come in this week, so I'm not exactly sure, but it, it'll be around a hundred.
That's, that's how it'd last year, right?
I think we graduated eighty-six maybe.
I'm just trying to see the increase.
Yeah, we're anxiously awaiting tomorrow, a full day to know who is, like, sometimes you have no shows and of course we've enrolled a ton of new kids. Um, they're coming from everywhere, which is great, which is great, um, but you never know who's gonna not show up. And so, tomorrow is like the first full day where everybody will be there, so we'll have a better idea about our numbers.
Baron, you had eighty-eight on this page and, uh, the eleven graders was a hundred and two.
Okay, so it should be around that, give or take. That's a good number. I mean, because we, we've had been falling for several years. I mean, we got even down to like the.
We had one class that was in the center.
Yeah, that kind of bothered you.
Oh, yeah.
Because that was, that's real low for a real school. I know somebody put on, they were in the class of seventy-three, it was a hundred and fifty. Yeah, I saw that today, a hundred and fifty-five and I think seventy-three. My fact, the cheerleaders got it.
Mr. Boyd, I missed you.
Um, I think I mentioned at the last board meeting that it couldn't be helped that they were scheduling redoing the network at Grayson and at Central. Um, the crew come in and they are fantastic. They are finished today with all the network equipment. And, uh, did a little speed test at Central, which was probably one of our worst schools and the wifi on the cell phone's tripled, so I know it's even better for Chromebooks. Um, so it's, it's great. We had one little hiccup. The phones at Grayson is dependent on our previous, uh, service provider and we're still waiting on them to get back with us to reconfigure it. But other than that, those two schools are up. Uh, we've got a few external cameras around different campuses that they're gonna come back and do probably next week. Um, other than that, we're, uh, we're fixing the little things that happened over the summer. Uh, printers not wanting to work and boards not wanting to turn on little things, but other than that, we've been just busy doing those.
Hey Mike, if you face the Union Central, the camera to the left, does it work? That's facing the ball.
Facing the building, facing the ball field. It does today. It started back because of the network equipment. Right.
I'm glad it is working.
And we have another one on the front of the, um, the building that's gonna be facing the, in that direction, so.
Out of nature, the superintendent's report.
I'm just so proud of these people and all that they've done. Um, it's just the, the amount of work that has gone into making this restructuring a success is unmatched. Um, leaders, teachers, parents, students, um, district support, just putting everybody together with, um, it's just amazing. Today was a very proud moment when everybody, you know, you walk in and, and everybody's kind of dividing and, and try to help out at different schools. And when you see the smiling faces getting off the bus, going to school and then going home and, um, it's, um, we're off to a very good start. I'm so proud of everyone going together and helping us out, so. We hope we can do even better things.
So, Chris, I'm assuming you're still, the elephant in the room, you're still deciphering the test score, okay? When, when you find that information out, can you get it to us like in a time and amount so we can kind of look at it? Because I mean, it's different, you know, comments being made, comparison. I want to make sure that what we're doing was supposed to be doing, so it's no rush, just whenever you can get it.
Yeah, it's still raw data and I'm still playing with it. Um, the, the assessment rosters that the state sends out that officially checks the, like, what we print is just off of the DRC where the kids took the test. But once we get that assessment roster from the state, will they like take the kids out that have dropped and take the kids out that don't count, that kind of thing, then we'll compare and finalize it.
Um, I do want to let you know, we're gonna be Meet the Spartans at the high school stadium on August the twenty-fourth. And that'll be all of our junior high and high school football, cheer, dance, fans, color, big pep rally. Six p.m. And then, um, that will, you know, be a precursor to the jamboree game at La Salle on the twenty-fifth. And our JV, junior high and varsity will all play in that as well.
Twenty-four is on Thursday?
Twenty-four.
Have the field ready? I know the track's here.
The track, the track is, is good. We've gotta get it striked and that's coming in the next, um, basically ten days and I can't remember exactly when that was. The grass is growing, yeah, the grass is looking really good. We've got the field goals raised up. Um, Scott Glenn and Chuck Cruz, I think, are putting that together. They raised it up and welded in a piece to make it the right height. So, um, it's exciting, exciting.
So, we good? Ready to have a vote?
We do have one thing, but, I mean, it's.
It's not only agenda, so we have to speak on something on the agenda.
The agenda? There's no commentary on the agenda.
You have to comment on an agenda item.
So, I can't bring up a, a problem to the school board that's happening in our school? I can't bring that up?
No, you have to, you have to.
No, that's wrong. That's legally wrong.
With Gary, he can't if the board, two-thirds of the board vote for that.
I want, we want to present a problem that we've been dealing with.
Since March.
Randy knows about it since March.
My son's still not in school. I talked to you too. Late and early. He's still.
Still not in school and now they're demanding a new doctor's thing. We've done giving them too.
Have a good idea, Mr. New York? I have a second?